I am going to declare a quorum and call the City of Graton Committee a whole meeting for Monday, October 22, 2018 order. Kirk Patrick, please call the roll.
President or Mayor Keith Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Lawrence Garrish, Counselors Jill Rusk, Jamal Beckford, Stephen Sheffield, Gwannavir Depot, Rashad Carter, Finance Director Ron Yuhas, Clerk Deborah Patrick.
Thank you. I'm gonna jump around a little bit so that we have some guests and try to minimize how many people need to be here. We're gonna start with 719, which is crosswalks. Chief Stumm, I'll let you, if you could come up to the table.
Good evening. We have a resident in the City of Graton as a sight impaired spouse. He would like to put up a couple of signs in the neighborhood to slow vehicles down. A little proximal to advise it, they're in the audience from Mr. Senka. This came to my attention through one of my sergeants. It's, he would like to put a crosswalk across a state road, which would be down on Eastern Point Road near Third Acre Road. And it would allow a quality of life issue with the signs to slow traffic down in that area and allow them to enjoy walks in that area and slow traffic down. Now, Mr. Senka was very concerned for the low being of his spouse. It's a definite quality of life issue. What I see from the council is the ability to approach the State of Connecticut, put our signs up and ensure that residents' needs met. And also study further crosswalks in the community, because I think with foot traffic as it increases with the increased tiring, that we're gonna have a need to put more crosswalks in the City of Graton.
So, one of the things that has come up in the past is discussion on crosswalks and pedestrian, pedestrian ways and trying to, one, better identify them and better control them to lower the speeds in those areas. And this was brought up, I think this is tremendous. As the traffic official, I could make this call on my own, but I wanted to bring it up to the council, basically to get a consensus with this. We've already talked to the Highway Director, Tim Memers, and he is going to work with the State of Connecticut to get their permission and then get the paint so we can do the crosswalk and also the signs. So, just wanted to get consensus from council. Counselor Rusk.
I think this is a great idea, and I like the fact that you're looking at more of the crosswalks. I know this has been a concern that we've addressed a few times. Is there a way that we can make this one a little bit more visible? Maybe some flashing lights or something that can help? Because I know people see crosswalks and then they don't see crosswalks.
I agree. And rest assured, I'll do that. I will approach stakeholders and we'll get, boy, I'm gonna butcher this word, human essence of the paint that's on there as much as we can. And I agree, I'd like to get flashing in that area to slow vehicles down going in there. And quite frankly, we have a significant number of people, as I said earlier, that jock through there almost daily. And I think it's a definite public safety issue. In this particular case, it's a quality of life issue, but it's the right thing to do. And the mayor was out with us earlier, we did a site inspection of it, and I don't think it's gonna take a significant amount of work to get this done.
Thank you.
I would also agree. It's a high-traffic area, certainly a safety issue. My full support.
Anyone else? The other thing that we're going to do as part of this is, once it's, once we get started, once we're going with this, we're going to highly advertise this on Facebook and on other forms of social media to get the awareness. Part of this is the training and awareness to let people know that there's a new crosswalk and a new signage. So that, part of this is training the community and training the people that are coming down there to know where it is. So, any issues from the council?
Well, I think, just a comment, and I'm sure the chief has heard it before, anytime you put up a sign, you have to educate before you enforce. I'm sure that there'll be a lot of education put in beforehand.
We will, sure. We'll cover that area hard.
Absolutely. But, but my concern is because it's, crosswalks are always public safety and because it's a special interest here, I want to make sure that we put it out so that people understand where it is. Because, you know, we don't want to have somebody make a mistake and then we're all very sad. So, but I agree with you, the training part of it. Okay? Then that's what we'll do. We'll go forward.
Thank you.
Chief, move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming out. And thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Congratulations, Keith.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a new item, which is 578 municipal projects, which you do not have any paperwork on. Mayor, if I can get you to come, I have Parks and Recreation Director Bill here to talk about the Park House building that we have talked about for a while.
So, we have, as you all are aware, where the Park House is located here at the end of the driveway, we've been looking over the last couple of years to put a garage in the, run parallel to the existing building so we can store our equipment properly. Right now, we store some in the basement, some of it's outside in the elements. So, we budgeted some money for this. We've taken that, we got an engineered approved plan for a foundation. We took the packet out to bid the end of the summer and got bids in September 4th. The tabulations in front of you, what are the bids that we received for the project. The second guy, Warner, Kenneth Warner's son, was the low bid. And the next one, McMahon Enterprises, was the second. The purchasing agent and myself met with both of these companies last week to discuss, our bid was kind of broad in regards to what kind of fabric they could use. We didn't kind of put a stipulation on what it was. All we did is give them the foundation specs based on the engineer plan that was given to us. Kenneth Warner was a wooden structure, wooden trusses, would look similar to siding, matching the siding that's on the existing house. So, it looked, apparently, they look similar. Overbaited garage doors are what we've specified for usage for, they wouldn't be like something that's in your house. It'd be more industrial. And wood trusses, wood studs inside, so there's ability to kind of make the building grow with us if we had a wallet or put up an attic space or whatnot. The other gentleman was a prefab metal building. The gentleman subcontracts all of it out. It doesn't leave room for, you know, if we wanted to put walls inside, we'd have to, we'd have to stud out the hole inside. So, having met with these two gentlemen, I feel confident, and I've talked to the mayor, we've talked, I've talked to Ron and Finance in regards to going forward with the awarding of bid to Kenneth Warner's son so we can get this project moving and get our equipment stored properly for the Parks Department.
Go ahead, Counselor Sheffield.
When would you like to begin? I guess, once this...
He, he indicated, he could, I mean, if we could get this moving forward, we could start the foundation work and have it done before Thanksgiving or around Thanksgiving. And then the wooden structure, he doesn't care what the weather is due to the fact that he is gonna be inside. You know, he'll put the walls up and start and do all the stuff inside. He didn't have a concern with the weather at the elements. But, I mean, if we have to push it back past that, we could, he's, he's got mechanisms to do it if it gets colder with blankets and different types of heaters and stuff to keep the, make the concrete foundation firm so that he can do the woodwork.
Anybody else have a, Counselor Depot?
So, this money you said you've budgeted, so where does, where is this money coming from to do this project?
Okay.
So, this project was originally budgeted, I believe, in 2010, somewhere in that timeframe. There was money that was around $66,000 for construction that was set aside into the capital reserve account. So, we have that money set aside from that point. We also have money in the budgets, as you remember, going through this year's budget process, that we set aside for undesignated capital projects. So, this would be something that qualifies for that, where we pull the remaining piece out of the undesignated capital projects in order to get the shed filled or the garage filled.
And the difference in the price from what we set aside to what it is now is, one, based on 2010 prices, plus, excuse me, plus, I don't think foundation work was originally clotted in the original price. Is that close?
It was, but we weren't aware of how much ledge in the area that we're putting the foundation in. And I don't know if any of you, I mean, if you drive out here, you can see some of the rocks that are over there by that building. So, there is some more, bigger detailed plans for the, for the concrete work because of the ledge. I mean, the existing house right now has a, part of the foundation is a boulder. So, so there, you know, so there is work to be done on that part of it that wasn't taken into consideration in 2010 when we started looking at this project.
Counselor Beck.
Just to clarify, you said this was a wooden structure and that this could be expanded?
We could, I mean, we have the ability to put attic space in this because it's gonna be a trust, trust roof. So, it's got, you know, so we would actually be able to put flooring if we wanted to up if we found a need to store things out, you know, up and out of the way. We have the ability, right now, this is just gonna be stud-based inside, like a garage. So, it's not, if we wanted to close off one of them and wall, put sheet rock up and wall it up, we have that ability because the studs and everything will still already be there. As opposed to the metal building, we'd have to build all that inside.
There's an outstanding issue that we need to get resolved as to whether or not there needs to be an 824, 8-24 hearing for this with building and, with planning and zoning. So, that's why I'm not gonna ask for a motion to move it to the 5th of November. What I need is a consensus from you for a move forward. And if we find out we don't need an 824, 8-24, we will probably bring it up on the council meeting on the 5th. If not, then I won't be able to bring it up to a council meeting until after the 8-24 hearing has been held. Counselor Depot?
For us newbies, can you explain what an 8-24 is?
It's a, it's a referral that goes to the planning and zoning for their approval on city projects.
And the 8-24 refers to the paragraph number, that's what that is. So, basically, what hap, what has to happen is even on city projects, you have to refer to planning and zoning to ensure that we're not violating any of our local policies and procedures? Is that the only thing that's outstanding, Mayor?
We saw.
Okay.
Good, Mayor.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay. Then, when we find out the issue about the 8-24 hearing, we'll either proceed with the 5th or proceed as soon as that's done. Okay? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, number three, we're gonna go to 720, which is amendments, STANTEC agreement, water treatment plant project. Yeah, let's, uh, well, yeah, let's combine 720 and 721 because they're both for the same thing. These are amendments. The first one is...
Hey, I think the question is, there's two seven, there's two separate resolutions for 721.
Oh, they're in.
Right. Well, I'll talk about STANTEC first.
Okay, then let's, yeah.
So, there's, there's two basically amendments. An amendment is a change order to a contract for STANTEC. STANTEC did the engineering for the water treatment plant. The first agreement, number two, is for about $24,000, $23,000 maybe. In that agreement, we moved forward with in order to correct the deficiency in the design drawings as we rolled the project out with RHY. When we went to get the building permit, the stamp on the drawings was one code rev behind. So, the project had taken so long to design, the, by the time we bid it, the design finished, and by the time we bid it, the code had revved up one iteration. We went to get, we asked the state for waiver so that we wouldn't have to go back and do things. Take the time to go back and review it and spend the dollars for the engineers to review all the drawings. There's hundreds of drawings with this project. When Floyd was here, I asked him on the drawings, knew exactly. But, there's hundreds of drawings they have to review to do it. So, there's quite a bit of hours with that. So, that cost $23,000 to re-stamp all the drawings. Subsequent to that, we have engineering agreement amendment number three, which is helping us incorporate a change order for the abatement of PCVs in the construction documents. When they bid the facility, during the bid process, they discovered that there were PCVs in the building that needed to be abated. Basically, PCVs are an additive in the paint that makes it more pliable and stick better overall. It's coating the walls, the ceilings, and all the pipes in the plant. So, we're gonna talk about this next, which is a change order to the construction contract on the order of magnitude of $2.1 million. The additional $2 million worth of work on the construction contract has caused the design engineers to have to come up with a plan for the EPA that gets approved by the EPA and perform all the testing on soils outside of the facility, on all the paint in different surfaces inside the facility, the pool, drilling little holes everywhere, and then sending out hundreds of samples for PCB testing. That's all included in the engineering change order. And then finally, it requires them to come up with a plan on how to encapsulate any PCVs that are left in the facility, which some of the areas aren't being sandblasted with all the paint removed. And other areas that do get sandblasted with the paint removed may still have PCVs in cement and concrete because it penetrates through the porous material. So, it requires the development of a plan that monitors and ensures that everybody in that facility going forward knows where contamination is and is not.
Any questions?
So, you said there was a, an issue with this stamp number? Was there some kind of delay that caused the discrepancy? Or was it an error? Or what caused that discrepancy that we had to, because you said it was an extra $20-something thousand to get all those...
Right. The first amendment was to check that the drawings all met code, because it had revved up during all the three years that the plant was in design and went to final. This, this plant had been ongoing for multiple years before me. Keith, you might know better, but it's on an order of magnitude of eight years this plant was in design.
So, it's, it's because the project has taken so long that we had to re-stamp the, all of those...
It's actually because when they went final with the drawings, about a year later, a new code came up. And we didn't have the bid for construction done yet. And then, once we did go to bid, it's still, and we had the bid numbers for building it, we still went back to the Freeman and had the project reauthorized at a higher level, and that took an additional four or five months.
Counselor Depot?
So, what is, is, there's a lot of numbers in here. Is there an overall cost increase because of this delay?
The project was authorized in $54 million. The $54 million included a 10.2, I believe, percent contingency, which is on the order of magnitude of $4.8 million-ish. And during the process of developing the contingency numbers, we applied to the state, knowing that we had contamination in the facility. We doubled the traditional contingency amount for this project from basically just over $2, $2.5 million to just about $5 million. So, we doubled it for the finding of hazardous materials. That doesn't make us feel any better that we're standing here, trust me. But, it was done for that reason.
Go ahead, you're on a roll, and then I'll...
Well, I just would like to ask that question again because I didn't get, like, I, I know you kind of answered it, but, so, the approved amount is not increasing?
No.
Okay.
I was only gonna say, we don't have a lot of choice, because you have to do this. You have to take care of the contamination. And if there's an extra cost, I mean, the Department of Health is not gonna allow you to proceed without getting rid of these contaminants.
Yes. One of the, one of the surprising things I learned in the beginning was that even if we had abandoned this facility and like built a brand-new one,
Right.
we would be responsible for the full abatement cost of all the PCVs in the derelict facility, having to send them out, as, just as we're doing now, as we clean the material off, the piping and everything.
And it's good that we have the extra money available to cover this.
It's very good. We have the extra money to cover this.
I guess the point I'm making is, we don't really have any choice. We have to do it.
Unfortunately, when you're in a project and you discover things and you need to get it done, usually you have to take care of things. There are some things that come up in a project that are optional, that you don't have to do.
But that's, this is not one of them.
This is not one of those optional things that come up. When we did bid the project, there was an allowance placed in the construction contract of about $650,000 for hazardous materials abatement. That was an estimate just put into the bid package by the engineering firm, just as an allowance. At this point, we've burned through $600,000 of that allowance on the construction contract. So, the next thing we're gonna talk about is the increase to the construction contract, which is the larger of the two numbers. When the construction, the way that the engineering contract relates to the contract, the construction contract is, when the construction contract's scope increased by $2 million of abatement, it also did increase the scope of the engineering work and the hours into it, especially as it goes to EPA plan, approval of the plan, and moving forward with all the other things required.
All right. Counselor Sheffield.
Yes, Ron, it's, how, how close are we as far as, I mean, are there any more deadlines that may impede the progress to where more out-of-pocket costs might incur?
I'm gonna answer that in two ways. What, what we did with the, the actual change order for the construction contract is slightly over $1.7 million. The DPH asked us for an absolute worst case on what we believe, the engineer believes, and the RHY contractor believes is the total cost of the PCVs. So, we have, we are authorizing the engineering amendment at the exact amount, which also assumes that we have trouble at the very end with our approval on how to encapsulate the PCVs that are left over, assuming we have a hard time and can't get them all, we've done this and that. So, that number, we may not spend every little bit. But, that add on that amendment was $30,000 plus and minus a dollar. On the construction side, the current number we have hard is 1.73, I believe, million. And we have gone through the worst-case scenarios, and that's the number we're bringing to you, $2.1 million on the construction contract. So, that we have the full thing in our head and we are talking to the DPH that way, because the DPH is like another team member on this project, and they're asking us for, ask us all the possible things that could go bad. So, in the project, that's how we're doing that. As we look at the risk overall on spending the money in the contingency, so we will have spent not quite half of the contingency at this point. And the small change orders kicking around at this point are, you know, less than $100,000 in total. It's, I think, I'm not sure what it is, but it's a, you know, 10 or 20 grand are small at this point. Some saving money, some costing money, but all relatively small. We have engaged, I've engaged the executive team, and we still will probably meet with Keith and let him ask more questions. If we are now a third of the way through this project, that means we have two-thirds left. So, does that, in your, in your heart, should you have spent, let's say, worst case, a third of the contingency and two-thirds, you got two-thirds left, if we're spending half of it now? And what the discussions have been to date is that being slightly over one-third of the way through the project should have encountered more than half the risk of the project. Currently, the discussions are that the major risk of the project would be, if you drive through the plant right now, there are hundreds of pieces of pipe everywhere. All that pipe is going underground. The risk would be that we find something underground as we dig up the old pipe to replace it. It is not currently identified. That is where we believe that the risk is. However, believe it or not, digging up dirt and putting in pipe isn't as expensive as removing PCVs as a general utility. It's brute effort, man-hours, and machine, but we have all that on-site.
Yeah, my concern would probably be, like I said, as long as we don't reach any expiration to where we have to go back and reanalyze things, you know, as far as code and all that, to where, you know, we're reaching our deadlines prior to anything, you know, having like a penalty cost or anything like that, we're, you know...
Well, the reason we're putting through the construction change order at this point is because that contingency, that, that money, it wasn't really a contingency, the allowance of $650,000 is down to $50,000. And were we to run out of that money, it could cause certain contractors, any given day, there's 60 to 70 people working on site, and it's good to keep them busy. We don't want to cause any delay in the scroll of the way the construction contract goes, because that can be costly too. And that can come to bite here. For example, last year's snow and weather caused the zero-cost change order that added 15 days to the construction schedule. There was no cost, it was just, they made a request that the engineer can be 15 days late, and there's an agreement, maybe, yes, as long as that doesn't add to cost. So, things as you go live can affect things. Some things can delay construction, which might have monetary cost. The engineering firm and the project managers watch that very closely. I must admit, Ray Valentinie and Mike Weber are doing an absolutely great job on this. I must admit, Ray Valentinie and Mike Weber are doing an absolutely great job on this.
Sorry, I stepped out, but I just want to ask a couple of questions just for clarification. So when I'm looking at this, the, you had talked about the engineering codes being revved, right? So, do you know when abouts we went through, or when we had whoever was doing the building code analysis, like, how far did we miss this by? Was this like, we got the new building code a week after this was completed? Or was this, is this years in the making, or...
I do know that the design was final for like two years before we went to bid, at least.
Okay.
Because the whole time I've been here, the design has been really finished.
And this, and this twenty-three thousand, that encompasses, I mean, I mean, is this the worst case?
That work is done and it actually is, it includes the restamping all the drawings by all the engineering disciplines.
Oh, okay.
They do it by mechanical, plumbing.
Gotcha.
They go through every single discipline. That's actually what wraps up the tab.
Okay. And then, and then on the second portion, the three hundred thousand, you know, three hundred ten thousand, you were saying, is this the worst-case scenario?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's, those are my questions. Oh, I'm sorry, I lied. One more question. Right, so you also mentioned that, so this last portion of it, the two million one hundred, you said that is the allowed one point seven three million plus the three hundred thousand?
Worst-case scenario, it lays on top of that, what happens if, when we blast the material and they go back and test, they do a test to validate that the PCBs have moved to the appropriate level. If they're not, that is the worst case of what we would have to do to provide the encapsulation or the remediation that that would cause. And that was an estimate given to us by RHY, validated by StanTech, and we added that in. And that's because the Department of Health asked us to give them a worst case for what that would be. All these, all these change orders go through the Department of Health Drinking Water Section, be signed as appropriate.
Gotcha.
And they actually approve that.
All right. Let me address a couple of things you haven't asked and get you to why we're here and how this got here. First of all, we talk about change orders. Change orders will not come to you guys. But the amendments, engineering agreement amendments, will come to the council. And under seven twenty, the reason you have two is because the twenty-three thousand dollar one, that's the first one, is done. And we discovered during the review of bringing the second one, the three hundred and ten thousand to you, that the first one that I have in front, which is actually number two, was not brought to the council for approval. So this is a, maya cope, if you will, it is an administrative action to get council's approval to it. It has already been signed. In the future, all engineering agreement amendments will be signed by me. And they will go through you because I signed, well, the mayor signed the contract. Couple of things. We recently had a monthly meeting with our group, DPH, StanTech, RH White, and some other subs to talk, it was the monthly meeting, but this came up. And then afterwards, we had a special meeting between the utility, me, and the DPH. And I will tell you, the DPH is as concerned about this as you are and as I was. My concern is we're one third of the way through as far as work goes, but we're about to be one-half the way of spending contingency. I have went on the record and have stated before, I do not intend to go back to the Freeman and ask for additional funding for this. So we got to figure this out. I am a little aggravated because I think this should have been identified during the original ship check and everything else, and it wasn't, for whatever reason. So the two, the two million, two point one million actually, is the worst case with what we think is going on, the, for the abatement. The three hundred and ten thousand is for the plan to conduct the abatement. We are not going to stop work. The question was asked specifically that if they run out of abatement money, is there additional work that they can do in order to continue work and not stop work and demobilize? And therefore, we have a demobilization expense and then a remobilization expense, which is going to hurt us. The answer was that's not going to be a problem. The other thing is, this is going to the EPA. The EPA, the reason I didn't call an emergency meeting with us is because the EPA has thirty days to approve the plan. And within the thirty days, we can follow our normal process and get these resolutions reviewed at the Cal Committee of the Hall, excuse me, and approved at the council. So when you go to seven twenty, that's why you have two resolutions. One resolution, where we are housekeeping, getting the council to approve. The second resolution under seven twenty is a new resolution for the engineering drawings for this work. And then seven twenty-one is for, excuse me, is for the actual abatement work that will be, that will be done. Okay? Are there any other questions with seven twenty or seven twenty-one? Counselor Sheffield.
So the cost of the abatement that's about to take place is, what, you said one point three, or was it?
One point seven.
One point seven.
That's what the actual change order for RH White is currently written out as.
So we'll have roughly four hundred thousand left because it won't exceed two point one million. Okay.
The idea is we don't want to spend it if we don't have to. So we don't want to authorize the contractors to spend it.
Well, and the other thing is, I wanted to go with a not-to-exceed, with a higher amount, so that we don't get caught up in a, oops, we went over to one point seven, we need to go to two point one, now I have to go back to council. Now I will have council's permission to go to two point one and not exceed, we will not exceed two point one without coming back and talking to you. Okay? We are not going to bust this project. Okay?
Do you make a motion? We move it to the council meeting of eleven five.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's for seven twenty. Let's have a motion for seven twenty-one.
So much.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second for seven twenty-one. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, attention, motion carries. Who are we in? One, two, three, four, five is... Let's go to five sixty-one. I want to, we need to continue to move this along. Five sixty-one is the Grotten Utility Financials. Do you guys have copies of the report?
Last one, you left me with one question. May I start, man?
Yes.
You left me with a question about the city day expenses. We went back and took a look. During city day last year, Tina was out, she didn't guide the work. So in the year before's numbers, we only had seven employees charge their time to the city day expenses. And this year and the year before, we're both eighteen people charged to city day for expenses. So that was the difference in the expenditure this year. Plus, this year, she actually bought more to give out than what she had the year before, because she had leftovers from the year before.
Can you repeat that?
So she gives out bottles and different things that Grotton Utilities spent. It's not real expensive stuff, but it still costs three thousand dollars.
So you just said that she had leftovers from last year. Why would that increase the cost?
No, it was the year we spent less. She had, this year we spent more because we did not have leftovers.
Okay.
And we were comparing it to the spend the previous year because that was on the financials. So he said, well, jeez, the year before, the costs were a lot lower. And I said, more than likely, this year, we got all the costs right. We got it put in there. Is a general, the city day expenses a budgeted at ten thousand dollars? That spreads sixty, thirty, ten to the three utilities. Six thousand to electric. Third, three thousand to water. One thousand to sewer.
Counselor Debo.
I thought it all came out of the electric budget.
No. That comes out of customer service, customer service spreads.
Okay, can I?
Go ahead.
Well, on top of that, so you're saying that in two thousand seventeen, there were eighteen employees there, but only seven got charged to city day? So the...
Your customer service missed, Tina wasn't here to do that.
So the other eleven got charged into just the rest of the regular?
Just overhead, just their regular accounts. Unless, unless employees bill to a special work order, their costs go to their, just the overhead account where they're assigned.
Counselor Russell.
So taking a step back, we've always been told, and we've told others, that whatever is brought into the water and into the sewer stays in the water and the sewer. So why would using any of that fund to go to Grotton City Day?
The guys from the sewer plant were at city day.
Sure, but you were talking about other costs, that it was divided up sixty, thirty, ten? Am I right on that?
All administrative costs to pay for admin, customer service, IT, spread to all three units, it's sixty, thirty, ten.
Okay. I think the concern that I'm getting from across the table is that we're taking money... I understand people cost. Anything else, like you were talking about giving giveaways and things like that? Does that come out of all three budgets also?
For city day, that's the way it spreads. There's certain things that do and there's certain things that don't.
So then I feel like we haven't been either told the truth or we haven't been telling the truth.
Yeah, I think he's, I think he's saying it differently because I remember there was somebody who asked if money's coming from the sewage. And he had explained that there's three different accounts, but that's a billing thing. And he didn't know how to explain that. When it's not taken from revenues coming from the sewage, they just have to split it into three different accounts. Is that what you're referring to, as far as billing purposes?
So ten percent of my salary comes from sewer. Thirty percent comes from water. Sixty percent comes from electric.
I know it's a small number. I know that, you know, like three thousand dollars for giveaways at city day is not a big number. But when we're trying to cut back as much as possible for things like sewer, which has been a big concern for people, the fact that we're taking money from the sewer to put to Grotton City Days seems counter to what we've been saying in the past. Can I?
Go ahead.
No, I'm just...
Please continue.
That, that's my point. We've been saying, for you to get a budget out of all three, I completely understand that. You're the head of all three. For people who work in sewer, obviously, their budget or their salary is going to come out of the sewer budget. But to have anything like the cabaret or things that Grotton Utilities does to come out of this budget is counter to what we have been told and what we have been telling people. Am I, I mean...
We have said that what goes into the sewer budget stays in the sewer budget and that sewer's not used for water, it's not used for electric, water's not used for sewer, electric. And so when it looks like we're using sewer funds for giveaways, then it looks like we're not being totally truthful, honest with the ratepayers.
Yeah, and if I recall, because this came from, there was a concerned citizen that asked, I was here. And I thought somebody had stated, due to a statute, that we can't take funds.
That is correct. Connecticut general statute.
Yes, so I know what I'm talking about. So, and then when we asked that, you had explained that we're not taking those revenues to do that. And then you explained that there's three different accounts and that you couldn't explain it properly. But you said that whoever handles the books, the Grotton Utilities, can explain it. So I, I don't know if you can speak to that, because I think I...
Every event spreads based on different things. So, I mean, when we go through a budget, we generally authorize all the things. City day is a big event, every single enterprise involved, the water company goes, the sewerage company goes, and the other goes. City day is certainly an all-hands event for all of them. Each account would handle its overhead for going that way. The, when Tina bought, we can, we can validate it, but I'm pretty sure the labor went into the right accounts. This year, for FY nineteen, there was actually four hundred and seventy-five dollars that went there.
I'm sorry, into?
Sewer. For water, it was nineteen hundred dollars. And then for electric, it was thirteen thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, how much was electric?
Thirteen, thirteen and a half, thirteen and a half.
Now, I could almost understand this because we did have a tent with sewer guys there, right?
Right.
BF guys were there. So if they were handing out giveaways as associated with the sewerage... I understand. It doesn't sit well.
It doesn't sit well. It doesn't sit well at all. Because we have been very specific, saying what goes to sewer stays in sewer, what goes to water stays in water, and electric can be used. And I get, like, that's what we've been saying all along. So to say, we're taking money out of sewer and we're using it for... I'm fine with costs of employees. I'm fine with, you know, whatever we need to get there. I'm not okay with giveaways.
Say one more thing.
Hold on, hold on, what? Next to you.
So there was four hundred and seventy-five dollars that came out of sewer in two thousand nineteen, and they had a tent.
Okay, Counselor Carter.
I get what you're saying, Counselor Russell. But with that said, you had also stated on numerous occasions that with sewage, we have to educate the community and whatnot. You have an imagination that the giveaways have to do with the flushing of the toilets and the paper and all that stuff. That stuff's not free? That may have been associated with that stuff?
When David does the cost breakdown based on the different events, they're trying to allocate it based on what actually physically happens. City day is special, that's why it had its own line in the electric budget. That budget was kind of, the bump did it there because it doesn't actually, when you look at it, there is a spread that goes into all the accounts for that because all the departments get involved. Tina buys things, happened to build that all to the electric account. And that's why that account was high. But she also uses that in multiple events, you know, in other city day. So...
So, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. So does sewer and water, do those budgets have anything else that they are spending money on? Any sort of, you know, other than city day, any sort of cabaret? Any sort of, you know, something at the park, music at the park, anything like that?
I can look at each one of those individual. David wouldn't be able to give you that all-hand, either, if you have to look.
Okay.
But we have all that detail.
I'd love that.
I think we actually addressed that and it was split between electric and water because the comment was made about the construction of the park with Markerson Recreation a few meetings back.
Right. However, we need, let's check... However, let's check on cabarets, concerts in the park, and the concerts at the beach to ensure that, because we have made some very strong statements about where we're going to use funds for the sewer. I understand your concern. I share it. We need to make sure that we are truthful and transparent. Counselor Depot?
Excuse me. I understand what you're saying. My biggest problem that I have with it is on the comparative income statement, on the electric one, it lists City Day, and it does not list it on water or sewer.
Right. That's what I said. It was leftover from before.
Right, but I mean, I would think that there would be a line item, if we're using that money for City Day, it should be a line item so that we can see it looks like it's left out on purpose to me. Just if I'm just looking at the three side by side, that line's not in there. So I would make the assumption that that money isn't spent there. So, that's kind of echoing what Counselor Russ said. I don't understand why, if we're spending money on something, it should be more clearly stated in the paperwork.
Don't disagree.
Counselor, you have the...
I see City Day and number 33 on electric. And here goes across blank, and then there's no variance or anything.
Counselor Depot just said...
There's a line item, but nothing there.
All right, we'll take it as a look. We'll get back to you.
Cabaret, concert, park, is it there?
The concert in the park, cabaret, and then the beach.
Concerts at the beach?
Concerts at the beach.
Or anything.
I don't know what you're saying.
Well, really. Right.
Well, I'll bring them in for analogy.
Thank you.
Okay, continue on with utility financials.
I think that's actually why we have these meetings to talk more. We do go through a lot, and I know all these things must have come up at some point in the past, but probably a lot of this stuff was set the way it was for years, and it's just been that way. Overall total electric revenue for September is almost 10%, 387,000 more than budget. Residential sales, they were 20% more than budget, drove the positive variance. All other classes of service were also above budget. Residual energy sales, which do not include industrial pass-through energy, totaled 28 million kilowatt hours. More than residual energy purchases, which totaled 26 million kilowatt hours, which validates what I was brought up last month, that the energy purchased in August and not billed was recovered in the September sales. Cooling degree day requirements for September were 30% more than heating degree days requirements, which were 73% less than September of last year. O&M expenses for the month are slightly below budget, 1.2% or 11,000. The net income from operations for the month is 32%, 32% more than budget. O&M expenses for fiscal year to date are 13 and a half percent below budget or 350,000. For the fiscal year to date, net income from operations is 18% more than budget, and net performance after the effects of EDC is 21% more than budget. Day's cash on hand for electric is 107. Power purchase from solar customers shown on this particular schedule page four, 206,000 kilowatt hours was purchased from solar customers production for the month, which is 25% less than last September. In page five, the fourth, 752 kilowatt was purchased from solar customers production for this year to date, which is about 10% less than this year to date. Might be delaying. Anything else on electric?
Counsel, questions? Okay, hold on.
Water division cash in the electric count is shown on line 29 of the balance sheet. Due from electric is over 271,000, and line 29 shows 3,000 due from the sewer division. Cash due from electric was low because bond fund project expenditures have not been replenished from the bond fund investment account. Day's cash on hand for the water division is 323. The combined electric and water sewer utility day's cash on hand is 127. The reimbursement process with the state continues to be timely such that the monies are received from the state in time to pay billings when due without using any internal cash. For the fiscal year to date, over 14 million has been incurred for the project, and a total of 12 million has been received from the DWSRF loan and grant. You'll note that construction work in progress, CWIP on page six, line 11, of the balance sheet is almost 21 million, and it continues to rise in progress as the project progresses. Total revenues open off of September are 1.4% or 13,000 more than budget. Negative commercial and industrial class variance was offset by positive resale. O&M expenses for September is 19% less than budget. The gain from the positive variance in other income and deductions is related to the DPHH consent agreement projects, which have only just begun. As the project proceeds, we will see less of a variance impact. Net earnings before the DWSRF grant for the month are 268,000 greater than budget. Operation and maintenance expenses for this year to date is 21% less than budget. Net earnings before DWSRF grant proceeds for this year to date is 800,000 more than Water treatment plant restricted funding, balance sheet on 25, includes 1.9 million for collections through June 30th, 2018 fiscal year end. Do you want to talk about any water numbers, or I can relate to this sewer commentary?
Okay, go ahead, sewer?
Total sewer revenues presented for the third month of operation as a division of Groton Utilities are almost 23% below budget. The budget revenues were developed by the rate consumption as part of the cost of service studies, which has used historical cubic feet meters from water sales to the city of Groton Residence. Cost of service study did not provide remedied water usage that would not be dispersed into the sewer system as such in our contract. Subsequent major industrial accounts identified that they have meters in place to measure water not given into the sewer system, and have requested that such amounts not be charged with sewer fee. As a result, industrial revenues will be considerably below budget for the first year of operation. For September, this number was 90,000. Operation and maintenance expenses for the third month of operation is 9.4% below budget. The positive variance helped to offset some of the negative revenue variance of the month. The budgeted operation expenses were developed based on the solution of any facility historic operating expenditures under the City General Fund, plus a 10% allocation of Groton Utilities' administration, IT, and customer service costs. As a result, net income from operations for September is 43% less than budget. The balance sheet of the sewer division is set out based on a sewer fixed asset listing transferred from the City General Fund as a FY 2017 and sewer bond fund schedule as of FY 2018. The sewer fixed asset listing as of FY 2018 are not yet developed. Once the sewer fixed asset listing is updated for FY 2018, the balance sheet of the sewer division will be adjusted appropriately. The net cash flow from the sewer division for the month of September is negative 310,000, which is the net of the due to electric division due to water division as shown on the balance sheet. During September, bond debt service was paid in an amount of 536,000. For the months of September, current liabilities exceed current assets by 33,000 due to that payment.
Okay, questions, Counsel?
I just have a question. Yeah, this is on the, under the electric division. Just street lighting? This is on, I'm looking at page four. And I'm seeing on line, I think 60, we have public street lighting. It's 264. I'm guessing those are, it says number of customers, so I'm assuming that's the number of streetlights maybe that we're servicing in the city?
It's supposed to be yes.
And when I look at the, when I also look at line 38, it says that there's an increase of, by 43%. I wasn't sure if this encompassed anything else other than just the kilowatt, kilowatts sold. I know we had switched over to LEDs, right? These are...
The top is actually the revenue, which may reflect the rate adjustment on the tariff that was made in the middle because the rates went up.
Okay.
The board stayed a flat at the general. Down the bottom, there's different classes in each of the tariffs, and that's what you see reflected as residential, commercial, industrial, and public street lighting. A lot of public street lighting, like some of the parking lots have lighting, like EB's parking lights, actually, they get a bill for each one of the lights that are in their parking lots. They're private, but they're public. So, they're each fallen under one of these rate classes. And actually, as we update the LED lights, the numbers are being fixed, become more and more accurate. Because over the years, these databases have become corrupt and it's been, we've been updating.
Counselor Depot?
So, let me just clarify. So, are you saying that they, under, on page four, revenue per kilowatt hour sold, that those categories don't match up with number of customers down below? Because I think what Counselor Beckford's saying is, under line 60, public street lighting, we have, according to this, 12 less customers, which, I don't know if that, like he's saying, I don't know if that's streetlights, we have 12 less of them this year, but the amount has increased 43%.
On top, it's actually revenue per kilowatt hour sold. So it's 26 cents per kilowatt as compared with 38 cents per kilowatt. So it's up on top, it's comparing to rate. Whereas down the bottom, we're comparing the amount of customers compared to this done last year.
So we've switched to LEDs, and now it's costing us more?
On street lighting, on line 38, whatever that reflects, yes.
Counselor, you have this? So, yeah, we're paying more per kilowatt hour with the LED, okay.
That, those lights may not have been converted to LED yet.
Oh, all right, so not everything's been converted, okay.
No. Most of the lights that have been converted to this point, I believe, is in the residential. There's, say, there's 12,000 customers.
I think we won this one 80. That's actually what we're charging per kilowatt to the customers that we're charging the street lighting. It's not an expense to us as we're charged.
Right, that's our top.
No, wait, right, but the word expenditure was thrown out. It's the revenue that we're charging.
It's making far more sense now. Thank you.
That's just the rate increase. The rate increase is 40%. It's not the cost per street light. Okay.
Counselor Russ?
Since we're on lights, I'm going to ask the question that I got. So, I was coming off the subbase the other day, and the red light wasn't working. And so I contacted Patrice Granitowski because I thought it was a town light, and found out, long story short, it came right back to GU. Why, how many lights does GU control, streetlights, or own or operate, and why?
I believe it's legacy. I believe the city charter has been run as city.
This is in the town?
I, we may, we actually, the town contracts us to take care of some of their lights.
So the town is paying you to take care of them? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, the ones in the city that aren't on state roads, GU fixes and maintains.
This was the red light?
The red light outside of the subbase? Correct.
This is the red light outside the subbase. The answer's the same, it's a different light. We're contracted by the town and the state to take care of those lights. Actually, I don't think it's a town light, I think it's a state light.
Is it the one on the main road or the one all the way down by?
The one all the way down by Nautilus. I was coming off the base.
I don't believe the one on the main road is. We don't have to explain this.
And in yours, it means you're contracted to take care of that? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so sewer, this is the third data form. We are continuing to look. The utility is still looking at, at cost and at revenue. You have, you're talking to somebody about a cost of service study, right?
Yes.
So you're looking at that, and we're also looking at ways where we could adjust rates, either through the .054 cents per cubic foot or through the service charge. So we are looking, right, we are still looking at that, right?
We're running the Utility Commission slash WPCA through an education process. This month, we did capital, capital need and capital expense with what we're currently planning on doing the rest of this year, and that came up with basically a five-year plan that we're going to run against what we need to do and what we can afford in the cost of service study to try to keep consistency in nowhere we should be overall. So each month...
I'm not sure you answered, but we're still looking at possibly tweaking the rates.
Oh, certainly. We're running, we're going right through the whole process.
Okay. Because that's one of the things that I said we were going to do. We're doing monthly reviews of this, and then at about the six-month point, we're going to take a look at tweaking. Counselor Depot?
So, are we expecting at the November committee of the whole or the December committee of the whole, an analysis of if we tweak rates, what it would do?
Do you want me to answer?
Yeah, go ahead.
We won't be ready next month. We're targeting December.
So then, if we, if we get the information at the December meeting, what is the timeline like to possibly make a change? If we find at the December meeting that the numbers make sense to tweak it in some way, how, what's that timeline going to be like?
So, these presentations are to the WPCA at this point. The WPCA would schedule a public hearing, and the WPCA, at the public hearing after comment, could have a session to change the rate.
Have a special meeting to change the rates. Because now, remember, one of the things that we did is we moved the WPCA to the Utility Commission? So the reason we're still discussing this is because we have a lot of people still asking us about what's going on with the sewer. So the Utility Commission slash WPCA would be the ones that will actually adjust the rates after a public hearing. So that would be probably in January, right? Counselor Depot?
So just to clarify, probably not much more than 30 days. Not like 120 days or something like that, not, it's 30 to 60 days kind of timeframe?
From now?
No, no, no. From... From if, if the numbers are reviewed.
Oh, yes. So from the time the numbers are reviewed and the decision is made that we need to make adjustments to the rates, what's the timeframe from there before we would have the public hearing and then have the special meeting and then make the decision to change the rate?
It's, the answer is how long you have to announce for the public hearing. Because usually, if you have the conclusion of a public hearing, then you have a special meeting and approve what was just discussed at the public hearing. So it's that...
I think it's two or three weeks we have to notice. I don't remember the exact date, but I know Deb knows, and I know I do.
We, I can bring, I'll bring that next month, too, because that would be good to actually be discussing in the other meeting set also. Usually, I try to mirror what we talked about here or there, and vice versa.
Any other questions? Counselor Sheffield?
Will we have a better analysis after one year than six months? How this is going to work out to a whole 12-month cycle as far as...
We actually, as of yesterday, Tina Daniels in customer service actually finished and it came to a consensus with Aaron on basically the summer months that we've experienced so far. We duplicated and did them on the other end of the, you know, the spring. So we think we've got usage, or usage, I'll call it usage, numbers that very accurately reflect whatever the last typical year was, the last 12 months, which we did not have before. And actually, in the process of going through this, Tina discovered more technical glitches, along with the help of finance, they discovered technical glitches in the way that the data was carrying over into the prime database. So there's high odds that the original cost of service study was based on volume numbers that were not correct. I know that to be true.
So to answer your question differently, I'm not waiting to hear. I have said upfront very clearly the direction of this council and this utility is going with the sewer fee, and I'm not deviating from that.
No, I'm not, I'm saying just the assessment of the fee itself, you know, to evaluate financially after 12 months would be better than what it's expected to be.
We actually, as of yesterday's dataset, we actually have completed the data gathering of everything we needed to put in to the portfolio to allow the process to move forward. I just don't believe that we'll be ready to present it in November. Because after it goes through, we actually got to sit and have people talk about it and try to make sure it's right. So I just don't think we can make that.
No, I was thinking longer, more than shorter to have a better evaluation of...
We've got some really good numbers.
Okay, that's what, that's what we're sorry.
Any other questions from the council, for the director? Okay? Thank you very much. Okay, the last thing we're going to talk about is 722. We're not going to talk about 723 and 24 because the planner's not here. He's sick today. So we'll get Ron to go through 722 quickly so we can get into executive session. No pressure.
So as part of your packet, you received the request for refund of property taxes. This is something that happens quite frequently when there's a change of assessed value. If somebody was to turn their license plates in and unregister a vehicle and they paid a tax on it, so it's just the adjustment. Normally, you don't see these unless they exceed the $500 threshold. So this refund is for 1,156. The reason for this, the assessed value was originally 493,710 of the property. It was reduced, for whatever reason, by FCFC, I don't know the exact reason for the reduction, by 252,420, bring the value down to 241,290. So that reduction of the 252 is what is creating the refund. So, and this is something that's done by the town, so the town's done for their portion of the taxes. Now, this is our portion of the city.
And we've done this before. This council has done this before. Any other, any questions on this? Do we have to need a motion to move this to the council, mayor and council meeting of 5 November?
I'll make the motion, and we refer it to 11:5.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Harry, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sent your motion, carry it now. Okay, we have no other business. I need a motion to go into executive session. Pursuit to Connecticut General Statute 1-206 Alpha to discuss personnel, police. Need the chief, counsel, and Captain Jenkins in that meeting. Pursuit to Connecticut General Statute 1-206 Echo and 1-210 B3 to discuss records of law enforcement investigation. Need the chief, counsel, white officer, and Captain Jenkins. Did I say Captain Jenkins for the first one, too?
Yes.
Okay, good. And then the last one is pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 1-206 Charlie to discuss security strategy, school safety, to include Chief Dr. Nick Sparra, counsel, Deb Patrick, and Glenn Freshman.
I'm not going to go.
You're not going to go? Okay. Then I will not need Deb.
I saw move.
Second.
Did you think Danny, too?
Do you want Graham?
Dr. Sparra as well.
Well, I have...
For the last one, the school thing.
Yeah, the last one's got Sparra. Do you, do you want Officer Graham, too? Officer Graham as well. Okay, then I need to include Officer Graham as well. Take your motion.
I saw move.
We have a motion in a second. Hall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're in executive session. We're going into C8. Deb, there is, excuse me, Corr Patrick, there is no business following this?